... with liberty and justice for all.
So we have an agenda in front of us. We need to add this Youth Council, right? Appointments. So we have one addition, which would be to reappoint eight members and appoint five new members for this Lea Youth Council. That would be after 10:143. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Move to approve as amended.
Second.
Move, Morrow, second. Ivy, to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We don't have any absences tonight. Under the consent agendas, in the comments on agenda items, our open meetings act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question on items that appear on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. This citizen comment period will be limited to a total of 45 minutes. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record.
Mary Hess, 600 Canterbury. I would be remiss if I did not address my concern again, being that the 10.63, the complete street ordinance addressing sidewalks and public improvements, that I not addressed my concern again for the Brecken area on Michigan Avenue and Celine Mylan Road. I was hoping that possibly the council, either at the work meet or something, would address this. I know you don't during a meeting, but I was hoping that possibly. I did go to the Bavarian Inn in Ann Arbor, Mongolian Beef, that was it. And I noticed that the tables and chairs are by the curb of all the restaurants in that area. And someone had said something to the effect that alcohol, because alcohol was served, that the tables and chairs had to be next to the building. And this is not true. State said that is not an issue. So I state my concern again as far as our public sidewalk, the safety part, be next to the building. And hopefully this would be addressed by the planner. One other thing, I did ask as far as a safety in case of tornado, if we could possibly put publicly next spring in our FYI, or somehow where the designated areas are for evacuation, especially for our Celine mobile home people, they have nothing. They have nothing. And I had asked Todd, and he said that he was concerned, but that you don't really want people going out during a storm. But I still think it should be, I'm on a different subject, I apologize. But I would like to have something in the paper, or something stated somewhere, library or somewhere, that there is a area, please don't go when the sirens go on, but they should have someplace to go for safety. It used to be the basement of this building that was designated. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further citizen comment? Now, we'll move on to consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion or at the request of any citizen or council member. Any item on it may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Move to approve as submitted.
Second. Move Rhodes, second Ping, to approve and adopt the items on the consent agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Under unfinished business, we have 1063, ordinance number 731, the complete streets ordinance. This is a motion to acknowledge, second reading of ordinance number 731, and ordinance to amend Chapter 74, Streets Sidewalks and Public Improvements of the Celine City Code by adding at the end, therefore thereof, excuse me, Article 8, Complete Streets, to provide for a regulate a design principle to promote a safe network of access for pedestrians, bicyclists, and motorists of all ages and abilities, and to approve and adopt or not adopt ordinance number 731 as submitted. We might possibly have a presentation. And if not, we'll move on. Just, we had opportunity, we had the first reading a week ago at our council meeting. So if we don't have a PowerPoint, we just be available for any questions.
Let me just verbally say that, first of all, this project has been made possible
Can you come over to the microphone? Can we get that fixed for the next meeting?
From the Washtenaw County Public Health Department, Michigan Department of Community Health, we have had a public workshop in where 28, oh, 24, I'm sorry, people showed up. And this has been going on for a period of about four months. And let me go briefly through the presentation I had for you tonight, and I passed a handout, and so you'll see the pictures tonight.
Thank you.
And first, with our complete streets, sometimes people don't know what that is. I think by now you do. It's providing streets for everyone and people of all ages of abilities. So it's thinking of streets not only for cars, but also for pedestrians and bicyclists, essentially. The benefits of complete streets are numerous. One and foremost is by making the streets available for all these users, you're providing more transportation options and greater safety for everyone involved. And by providing options, you're improving human health, and you're decreasing car traffic and reducing pollution, hopefully. Now, some of the factors that affect pedestrians and bicyclists in street environment are first whether or not there are facilities provided for them, sidewalks, bicycle lanes, any other type of bicycle facilities. And of course, traffic volume and speed affect the safety and the comfort of pedestrians or bicyclists. The pictures that you show, that you see on your handout is looking at what a street environment, the top one, and I'm on page two, where pedestrians are attempting to cross a, what appears to be at least a five-lane roadway, where no crosswalk are provided. In the second slide, you see a bicyclist on the top picture riding in a regular street without bicycle lane, and then the lower picture shows when there is a bicycle lane and how cars do not need to swerve in the next lane to make room for the bicyclist. The bottom slide shows how the perfect environment, the complete streets, should look like. It should be providing wide enough lanes for trucks and cars, bicycle lanes or bicycle facilities along the side, some kind of landscape strip separating bicyclists and cars from pedestrians, and a separate sidewalk, all of that within a right-of-way. Complete streets are not new. The city of Ann Arbor, and those two slides that you see on page three, show how the city of Ann Arbor has been adopting this complete streets policy for a while. And every time they have new roadwork construction, they implement these bicycle lanes, as you see, pedestrian refuge, and all sorts of facilities that we would love to see in Celine as well. You have a non-murderized transportation plan you've adopted last year, and so you have a plan network to follow and a guideline to start with. Within that plan, the recommendations were for, and I'm on page four and five, several types of accommodating either bicyclists or pedestrians. You had the sidewalk, you have bicycle lanes, and you have separate bike path or multi-use pathways. And on top of page five, you also have pedestrian refuge planned. The next three slides on page five and six is where we looked at, in particular, at some of your major arterials, and there were Maple, South Ann Arbor, I can't tell, oh, and North Ann Arbor, how you can, within your existing street cross-section, you can simply by painting a line, add some bicycle lanes and eliminate the center-turning lane. So we looked at doing that. And of course, there would need to be further study before implementing that type of recommendation, but it can be done at fairly, at a low cost. Complete streets have been, there's two bills that pass this summer at the state level, and so, and this is happening in Michigan all over. And this is what, the first thing we did when we researched for this ordinance is look at how, where it happened in Michigan. City of Jackson, Jackson County adopted complete street resolutions. City of Ann Arbor has a non-murderized plan that puts forth a complete streets policy. And cities of Flint and Lansing have complete streets ordinance. And your ordinance that's proposed tonight is patterned much like theirs. The elements of the ordinance, as you see in the last slide on page six, include the notion that it should include all users and cover all roads, the idea that it follows a plan network, which is in your 2009 non-murderized plan, that includes all projects, that all roadway construction improvements should include the bicycle and pedestrian element and facilities. And it would be an opportunity to improve safety and mobility for all travelers. And lastly, it specifies exceptions. With all ordinance, there are exceptions. So let me go into detail of those elements within your proposed ordinance tonight. And I'm on page seven right now. First is the definition of complete streets, and that is your ordinance right now I'm talking about. Section two addresses complete streets improvements. It makes reference to your non-murderized plan. It talks about the standards that needs to be followed. And section three addresses exceptions. And let me go over those in a more particular way. The exceptions that were put forth in case where any, these elements would be contrary to public health and safety, then in that case, you should not go forth with those proposals for complete street. When the cost would be excessive, that wouldn't be worth doing. When there is no proven need now or in the future. When the length of the project is too small to make a difference. Or when reconstruction of the right-of-way is due to an emergency. So all those are your exceptions within your ordinance. So with that, I'll let you, if you have any questions, both Jeff and I are here to answer.
Thanks. Any questions from council? No, I think we pretty much went through it last time, so thank you for coming back. If there's no further questions, we have a motion for adoption. Is there a mover?
So move to approve and adopt. Second.
Rhodes, second Ivy. Discussion? Is this to approve and adopt, I assume? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Rhodes.
Yeah, just, it was mentioned early on that this study was funded by the Washtenaw County Public Health, but I wanted to acknowledge the efforts of the citizens who are involved in Pick Up The Pace, Celine Pucks, because it was through that organization that those funds came to the city to do this study and to help support the complete streets ordinance. Thank you.
Any further discussion? We have a motion to acknowledge reading, a second reading of the ordinance, and to approve and adopt ordinance number 731. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under any business, item 10139, the stipulation for settlement of real property assessment appeal, Oxford Property Management versus City of Celine MTT docket number 350568. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the September 14, 2010 memo from City Assessor Skoll to approve or not approve the stipulation for entry of consent judgment for settlement of the 2008, 2009, and 2010 real property assessment appeal for Oxford Property Management versus City of Celine MTT docket number 350568 for revised taxable values for those years as shown in Assessor Skoll's memo, and to authorize or not authorize the City Assessor and City Attorney to sign the stipulation as submitted.
Move to approve and authorize. Support.
Morrow, second Rhodes. Discussion? No discussion? I will be abstaining from this vote due to a conflict of interest. So any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I abstain. Motion carries. Item 10141, request to waive penalty and interest on tax bill. Michael Courtney, this is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo from Michael D. Courtney, received September 13, 2010. September 15, 2010 memo from City Treasurer Bennett regarding request to waive tax penalty and interest. To approve or deny the request of Michael D. Courtney for waiver of the $216.75 penalty and interest charge on his tax bill for 384 Woodland Drive.
Move to deny.
Move Ivy, do we have a second? Motion dies for lack of support. Do we have a motion? So there's no action taken on this motion. We'll move on to 10142, purchase of real estate, Karpinski property at 207 Monroe Street. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of September 9, 2010, letter from Attorney Grossman on the sales contract between the City of Celine and the sellers, Thomas L. Green, Gary E. Green, and Dennis J. Green, to approve or not approve purchase of the Karpinski property at 207 Monroe Street at a cost of $100,000 in accordance with the sales contract, and to authorize or not authorize the mayor and clerk to execute said sales contract as prepared, reviewed by Attorney Grossman. Do you have a motion?
Move to approve and authorize.
Do we have a second?
Support.
Support, Rhodes. Discussion.
Thank you. I will be voting no on this motion, but first, I do want to thank and acknowledge the efforts of City Manager Campbell and City Attorney Grossman on this issue. I know they worked hard and devoted a significant amount of time to drafting this proposal, and I appreciate that, and I respect that. But I've heard before that, you know, staff works hard on an issue, as if that's a reason to support a proposal in and of itself, which it's not. But with that having been said, I appreciate the gentleman's efforts. I don't think we are tonight being, tonight it's proposed that we spend $100,000 without blinking an eye on something that I don't think we need, and I can't quite establish a reason as to why we want it. And what's worse is that there's never been a narrative articulated to me or anybody else as to why exactly we would be purchasing this property. In fact, the explanation and narrative that I've heard, in my judgment, constitutes nothing more than sort of a convoluted bowl of mush. And I think our people deserve, our citizens deserve better, and it's because of that that I will be voting no on this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Ms. Ping?
With respect to what Mr. Morrow said, I don't think that this decision was taken lightly, and I think that this is an important piece of property that's adjacent to several very important parts of our community, especially with the future plans for expansion of the city limits, the possibility of needing that property for expansion, excuse me, of our water treatment facility, having control of the land that's adjacent already to an area that's not very nice in our town, right on Michigan Avenue. I think it's important to have control of that property. And I think that originally, we were offered this property, tell me if I'm mistaken, but it was over $400,000 or some, some really high amount. And I think through hard work and careful negotiation, that we were able to obtain this property for $100,000. And the future use of it, I think, will be decided based on the needs of the city. And, you know, it's always possible that we end up reselling the property when the market is a little bit better, and selling it to a developer for future use, under the terms that we would like to see what happens there. So it's in the city's control. So this decision was not taken lightly for me, and I don't think it happened in the blink of an eye. So, you know, I really feel like this is a very important decision that the council is making tonight for the future of its citizens, and how our city will be developed in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Little?
Yeah, I was, or still am, a little uneasy about this purchase with it. But I also know that the city and Little League baseball has, for years, had to lease a portion of this property so that there was legal parking and safe parking for kids and adults attending Little League baseball. Also, I think that the park is not used as much as it should be. It's a great park, and it's, can be connected, you know, several blocks. And so that's my reason for voting for this, is that I think it's, one, we'll save a few bucks on this rental that's been going on for years and years, and two, it'll give us a chance to better utilize the park, and also to eventually create some safe parking for, well, we'll be creating safe parking for people attending not just Little League, but anything else that they want to attend to in that park. Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion? Mr. Rhodes?
I'd just like to mention that I supported Councilmember Ping's motion. This is a purchase that City Council and staff have worked on for a number of months, and we've had several meetings on it. And it will provide some flexibility in a portion of town where we don't have any at the present time. And while we may not have a real specific purpose, immediate purpose in mind for that property, it does allow us the, provide several options to move in different ways later. I think it's a worthwhile purchase.
Mr. Law?
Well, I'll agree with the majority of council on this, and I don't take lightly the fact of having to spend $100,000 of taxpayers' money on a piece of property, and that in itself gives me some hesitation. However, I think it's worthwhile because it does, if you want, put, really, the destiny of this land in our hands, and not in someone else's, which we may not like down the road. As Councilmember Ping alluded to, that hopefully, when the economy, or if, that's a huge if, in my opinion, the economy gets better, that we can turn around and if we saw the need to resell this land. But it does, about a park, and the treatment plant, and other possibilities could be endless. But if it's approved, and I assume it looks like it will be, I would be looking for the public's full input on what may happen with this piece of property, should the city continue to keep hold of it.
Mr. Morrow?
I just wanted to add one more thing, Mayor. Thank you. You know, at a time when we are struggling to receive the amount of revenue that's needed to fund essential government services, we are taking, or we are proposing tonight, the purchase of a significant parcel of land and transfer it from private ownership to public ownership, which seems irrational and not very logical, quite frankly. I would think at this time, we would want to be encouraging any type of private investment we can encourage, for lack of a better way to articulate it. And I don't, you know, I talked to City Engineer Ruble, but I'm sure quite a few houses could fit on there, and probably quite a few condos. And I think in time, the right buyer could be located and encouraged to invest in that property. And I just don't get the, with all due respect, I just don't understand the mindset as to why, you know, at this time in 2010, with the economy being what it is, that the City of Celine would want to step in and buy this property. It just doesn't make sense. Thank you.
Well, I'll put in my two cents, since everybody else has just about. I believe that this is a great opportunity for the city. It was pointed out earlier that it abuts our park, one of our major parks, and also would be part of the continuum of our linear trail. It also abuts our treatment plant, and most importantly, which was one of the things that came up, and while we haven't determined the outcome, our cemetery lot is, are full, and in the future, there might not be an opportunity for people to purchase parcels in our cemetery, and it's directly across the street from the cemetery. I'm very much aware, as elected official, of the importance of spending wisely, and I believe that this is an opportunity. As was mentioned earlier, the price has come down significantly. It is in a residential area, so there is opportunity for resale for multifamily. And at this point in time, our pre-audit fund balance, which is our savings account, is $2.7 million, and we have trended out for five years that we would be at $1.3 million based on our expectations of current spending. So while I recognize that this is a significant amount of money for the city, I think it is a wise decision, and that's what you do to make leadership decisions in the future. So I will be in support of this purchase. If there's any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Item 10143, Rec Center Building Maintenance Position Modification, Teamsters number 214. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the September 16, 2010 memo from City Manager Campbell to approve and adopt or not adopt the resolution as submitted, amending the agreement between the City of Celine and International Brotherhood of Teamsters, Chauffeurs, Warehousmen, and Helpers of America and its local number 214 for the building maintenance position wage scale, and to also approve the modified job description. Move to approve and adopt. The motion, Ping? Do we have a second?
Support.
Second Rhodes, to approve and adopt.
Correct.
Discussion. Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As you have before you, my memorandum referenced the building maintenance position at the Rec Center. It is, that position is within the Teamsters Local 214 Bargaining Unit. We had a recent retirement of a longtime, 10-year maintenance person, and while doing that, we also, you may recall, a couple of things we've done. We, in December, this past December, City entered into agreement with Campbell Inc. to maintain the HVAC and other various pumps and movable portions of equipment at the Rec Center, as well as City Hall. So part of, part of this position has changed a little bit, in that now it's more of a facilitation. If something goes wrong, they make the phone call and make sure it gets done. In the past, we did that as well, but not nearly as much as what we are now. And we also, with our cardio equipment that we purchased two years ago, or it's through a lease program, but that we obtained two years ago, with that, it also comes with a maintenance agreement. And so if a piece of equipment goes down, they make the call, they come in, they repair the piece of equipment, and it's back online very quickly. So some of those things, it's still, don't get me wrong, it's still a very important position that we need to have. We work with the Michigan Municipal League, Human Resources folks, to help us modify and draft the new job description, as you have attached the memo. And then we also asked them to do a market study, and their market study came back as close as it could be to our maintenance worker three at DPW as well, and it's also equivalent to our utility worker four at the PCF Pollution Control Facility and Water Treatment Plant. As we discussed, and part of the requirement, because it is in the Teamsters Bargaining Unit, we have to negotiate a wage, because we are modifying the collective bargaining agreement. We discussed it, and it is someplace, we do believe it, because it is one person. They don't have any supervisory capacity, but it is one person as opposed to having multiple people, like at the DPW or at the PCF Water Treatment Plant. But we believe that it's someplace between the maintenance worker three, utility four, and a working four-person position at the DPW. So we came to tentative agreement that we're proposing to City Council for consideration. Then, because right now, there's a difference between the maintenance worker three, utility worker four, and the building maintenance and Rec Center is, I believe it's $2.44 an hour, and what we tentatively agreed upon was a reduction of $1.44 an hour, based on 2080, just under, just a few dollars under $3,000 savings. So that's what we were proposing. They discussed and said it was a dollar increase from the maintenance worker three, utility worker four, because it, like I said, because some of the responsibilities, decisions they have to make are certainly above maintenance worker three, utility four, but below a working four-person. So that's where we, how we came to that negotiation. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Campbell? Mr. Ivey?
Not a question, just a comment. I'd like to commend the city manager and the city staff that worked on negotiating a revision of the wage scale, and I think these kind of opportunities don't come along every day, but any time they do, it's very necessary in the times that we live in to take advantage of them, and I think this is a good example of how we've done that. Thank you.
Mr. Rhodes?
I was also pleased to see the successful negotiation and excellent working relationship between the Teamsters Local 214 and our city manager to reduce the salary level to be more commensurate with the change in responsibilities, and pleased to see the resulting cost savings. Thank you.
Further discussion? We have a motion on the floor to approve and adopt. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 10-144, this is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the September 10 memo from Jody Robertson to appoint eight returning members and five new members to the Celine's Council for the 2010, 2011 year. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second?
Move Rhodes, second Ping. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion, commission committee reports from council members? Mr. Rhodes?
I have one which relates to the last motion, the youth council. While they have not yet had their first formal meeting, which will be tomorrow evening at 5:30 here in this chamber, they did conduct the Dress for Less event over the weekend, and while I don't have specific data on that, I understand it was another successful event, and Celine Youth Council are again to be congratulated.
Yes, there was a line out the door waiting for them to open. Okay, any other commission or committee reports? No? Do we have any reports or other announcements? Mr. Morrow?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take a brief moment to commend Kathy from Millpon Manor and all the staff of Evangelical Homes in Breckin Village, Celine, for putting on this past Saturday sort of a senior awareness recognition day, which culminated in a celebration at Millpon Manor to recognize their 20 years of existence, and many of my council colleagues participated in the various festivities, which included a breakfast in the morning, a parade, and then a barbecue and ceremony at Millpon Manor. Wonderful afternoon with a great turnout, and it was a wonderful opportunity to recognize our seniors and everything that Millpon Manor and that facility have brought to our community. So kudos to a job well done.
Any other discussion? Mr. Little got roasted, too. You're looking okay. You made it through, okay?
I'd say I'm well done.
You were well done. It's a nice event the chamber put on, so, and Mr. Little was a good sport.
You think so?
Well, I hope so. Hope that continues to be the situation, as I pointed out. You have all the tools now.
It was fun and very tolerable.
Good. Ms. Ping?
I just wanted to remind everybody of Harvest of the Arts this weekend, Saturday, downtown Celine, Chili Cook-Off.
Puppet Festival.
Puppet Festival, all kinds of events for kids. Are You Smarter Than a Fifth Grader Contest, which Mr. Morrow will be emceeing in his usual funny fashion, and obviously music and food, and the Celine Lindenberg Committee will also be having a food booth, and so lots of, lots of good things to celebrate Oktoberfest. And then the, the end performance is a dueling pianos act, which although it's not very Oktoberfestish, it is in spirit with their mission this year, which is to try to attract as many different various types of groups downtown as possible to try to expose them to the event in hopes that they'll return next year for both the art and the cultural side of things. So, thank you.
Also, the Volks March is, Ray, you want to talk about that?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay. In line with what Councilmember Ping was talking about, we do have a special Pick Up the Pace Celine Walk this Saturday as part of Harvest of the Arts, and there's a group coming down from Ann Arbor, the Volks March folks. And there, there should be 30 to 40 of those people coming down for an official walk, designated path, and our local residents who are involved with the pups walks, community walks, are invited to join. So that's on Saturday, nine o'clock in the morning on South Ann Arbor Street outside of Farmer's Market, although Farmer's Market won't be there this Saturday, it'll be in another place. But anyway, that's where we're going to meet. Couple of other announcements. Harvest Time at the Farm. This is the Renshler Farm Museum. Will be on Sunday, October the 3rd, from 12 to 5. This is different than what we've done in previous years. We're moving to a Sunday afternoon so that we're not in conflict with so many other things that go on on Saturdays, particularly this time of year. The Fifth Corner, Celine's new teen center, will have an open house for the general public on Saturday, October the 9th, at 211 Willis, which is the building at the corner of Willis and South Ann Arbor Street. It will run from 11:30 in the morning until a half hour after the University of Michigan football game ends, because it'll be on television down there. And so this is an opportunity for the general public to just come through and look at the space and talk with some of the board members who will be there. On the Friday night before that, October the 8th, there'll be a teen concert, and that's limited to teens, so most of us won't be able to attend that, except for the few who will be there as monitors. And the last thing that I had was, last week, I was able to go to a lunch and learn session, the subject of which was designing your community for a sustainable future, and had very, very good speakers, including a lady who came up from the city of Gehanna, which is outside of Columbus, Ohio, not a city I had heard anything about, but she talked about how they created a public-private development that has, they just had their grand opening a week and a half ago now, and based on the photos, it's amazing what they were able to do in a very small little village. And we had some other speakers there, too, so I collected an extra set of handouts for Mr. Campbell, as he asked me to do since he left with something else, and look forward to the opportunity to perhaps have a council work session on some of the things that were presented here at some point. That's it for me. Thank you.
Mr. Morrow?
Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry, Mayor, but Councilwoman Ping reminded me of something. As the council liaison to the Bixby Trust Committee, I would be remiss if I didn't add a second plug for the Puppetry Arts Festival, which will be happening this Saturday in conjunction with Harvest of the Arts Oktoberfest. And I want to mention it because there was some confusion. If people recall, or if citizens recall, we had that festival and workshop and performances at Union School, and I've gotten a few calls and emails about people who were concerned or who threw the grapevine that it wasn't happening at Union School because of the sale of that building, and I just wanted to state for the record that that performance and festival is happening at Union School. It will be in the auditorium, and it's from 11 to 3, 11:00 in the morning to 3:00 in the afternoon. There'll be a couple puppet performances, some of the Bixby puppets will be on display, and there'll also be some workshops for the children to make puppets, similar to the type that will be displayed and puppets that'll be involved in performances on Saturday. So please come out, it should be a great time, and the committee, the trust committee is very, very happy and honored to host that again this year. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Public comment under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question to City Council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record.
My name's Sonia Caparisi. I live at 419 Castleberry Drive. I have a letter to write, to read to the city council. Dear council members, we, my husband and I, are writing this letter to petition the city council to consider amending an ordinance in the city municipal code that seems rather unreasonable. This particular ordinance is located under Animals and reads as follows. Article 1, in general, Section 14-1, running at large prohibited generally. It shall be unlawful for any person owning, keeping, harboring, or possessing any cats, rabbits, hares, goats, hogs, sheep, cattle, or any other animals, chickens, ducks, geese, or other birds or poultry, to permit or allow the same to go at large at any time within the limits of the city. While we agree that animals such as goats, hog, cattle, and fowl should be prohibited from running at large throughout the city, we do not agree that cats belong in the same category as farm animals. According to an Associated Press Petside.com poll, about 59% of American households own pets, and about 47% of pet owners polled said they had cats. Based on these poll numbers, there are likely over 1,100 cats living in the city limits. The number of households in our Torwood subdivision alone would equate to about 36 cats. Goats, hogs, sheep, cattle, and fowl are typically animals that farmers keep in barns or pens, not in their homes. Cats cannot be kept inside a barn, pen, or even on a leash, and should not be treated as such. On any given day throughout our Torwood neighborhood and the many neighborhoods throughout the city, you can see cats walking around outside. In the 13 years we've lived in the city, until recently, we never heard of an issue or a complaint about any cats running at large. However, recently, we were the unfortunate recipients of a civil infraction citation issued by the city for allowing our cat to go at large. Surprised to hear of this ordinance, we later learned that the citation was issued as the result of a neighbor's complaint. Interestingly, we have also filed complaints to the city and our neighborhood association about this particular neighbor's excessive backyard bird feeding. Her year-round bird feeding attracts hundreds of birds and many other wild animals and rodents that come from the farmer's field and woods behind our homes to feed on the abundant food supply. These animals include hawks, fox, and coyote, and yes, cats, to prey on the birds. Our cat is the last defense against our yard and home being overrun with mice and chipmunks. Quite frankly, the cat ordinance seems ridiculous and difficult to enforce. With all of the challenges facing the city, and especially after recent staff reductions, does the city really have the resources to send somebody out looking for cats running around at large? Many cats look similar and cover a lot of territory, so how do you make sure that a citation issued is for a specific cat owned by a specific city resident? Our property backs up to the Celine township, and since the surrounding townships have no such ordinance, when cats wander over, who is going to stop them at the border? Doesn't this all sound silly? Our cat literally came out of the farmer's field from the township three years ago, and we took him in. Since then, we've shooed away numerous others. Domestic cats, generally speaking, do not cause property damage or harm people. Have you ever heard of a cat attacking or biting someone? From a practical standpoint, once the city decides to issue a citation to one cat owner, what about all the other cat owners in the city whose cats are running around at large? Shouldn't they, too, receive a citation? Not complying with a city ordinance is breaking the law, and we typically don't wait for someone to complain before taking action. Does our police department wait for someone to complain before taking action to enforce the speed limit? Of course not. So shouldn't the cat ordinance get the same proactive enforcement? Certainly, the cost of a city staff member's time and effort to run around issuing cat citations, and the added cost of a defendant possibly choosing to appear before a court magistrate, is not justified by the $25 ticket. For the reasons stated above and many others, I hope the city council will agree that the cat ordinance doesn't make sense and will take action to amend the ordinance to remove cats from Article 1, Section 14-1. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have copies if you would like.
Mary House, 600 Canterbury. I again am addressing the evacuation program. I know that an emergency operation type of thing, when you prepare, that ideally you have areas, and I would hope that the council would address that publicly and put it on our local origination station and in our paper, if you would address it maybe in the next couple minute meetings that it hasn't filled on deaf ears.
Okay, are there any other citizen comments? Not, is there any other business? Oops. Sorry.
Hi, I'm Thomas Saylor from Troop 416. I live on 9051 Gooding Drive, and I'm doing my citizenship of the World Merit Badge that's required for Eagle, and I would like to know what's the status of the lot on Michigan Ave?
We've been working with a developer to get it cleared up, and we're actually filing a suit in court with them.
What do you think the outcome will be?
It's to be determined.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any further citizen comments? Okay, our next meeting is October 4th at 7:30. Do we have a motion to adjourn at 8:20?
Move.
Mr. Morrow?
Second.
Second, Little. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.